Like to open up the meeting, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Good evening, everyone.
Sorry.
The big call to order this evening is budget discussion. So Debbie, do we have anybody that was coming in at five or like nobody coming in, right?
Not for knowledge, no. Sorry guys, I'll try not to.
No, it's okay.
Can't do another chance.
Glad you're here. I'm glad I wish you were on the picture.
It's okay.
So from what I understand, um, the FAC had a, we'll just start right out with the meeting last night. Um, and kinda, you know, get an idea, like give the public some idea of what was discussed in uh last evening's meeting. Um, I wasn't there, uh my two, you know, fellow board members were there, um. So, and we weren't able to get that notice, so there were no decisions made last night, uh they're the, they're chatting with the FAC.
Yep, exactly.
Yep. Alright, um, so Joe, would you like to kinda give an overview?
Um, so, uh, you know, for our discussions with all the department heads, we uh identified a lot of areas where we uh, we want, we wanted to discuss the importance of them, make it be ranked in this as lower, um, so forth, uh had a lot of those discussions over the past few weeks. Uh, the model's been, or spreadsheet's been updated to reflect on that, uh, there's a number of, of areas that we wanna discuss more tonight. And uh, and I think we're ready to do that, um, Mitch did get a couple of updates from emergency management and from the pools, and that's been, that's been incorporated in this latest model here.
Okay, so when you say uh latest model, does that come out, this, did you send it over email already or?
Uh, so.
Or what you have, like for us to see right now?
Um, what you see right now has, is latest and greatest, uh, the one I sent out this morning didn't have a couple of recent changes in there. They were minor, unfortunately they were in the right direction, so that's good.
Okay, alright, excellent, and then, so this, uh, the workbook that you have open now, does that reflect the changes that, you know, were discussed last night, or is this the model before those?
Yes. It reflects uh the discussions we had last night exactly, yes.
Okay, alright.
Yep.
Anybody object if I shut off somebody's side so you can see?
No, that's fine, yeah.
Agree with, yeah, thank you.
Uh, so just to bring me up to speed, uh, since those adjustments were made outside of um, the select board meeting and not what we had discussed before, um, do you know which lines were affected?
Well, there are actually quite a few ones, three.
I'd like to just, I'm the one who kinda brought this on after last week's meeting, and I looked and saw we're pushing a twenty percent increase over last year. I started to get concerned that we're gonna go into a default budget, and if we go into a default budget, we lose the COLA. And if we lose the COLA, I feel like we're probably gonna lose more employees. And so that was, that was the um motivation for me reaching out to the finance advisory committee. And so we, when we started last night, well, Joe took it and came up with a plan, and he laid that out last night, to bring us more closer to um an average inflationary rate for our increase in it. And because they've done the prioritization, it was relatively easy to go on priority three and pretty much say no to all of them. And then move up to priority two and try and pick and choose, and that was the spirit of what you guys were doing last night, I think.
Yep.
Just, just to see if we can bring it more in line with the inflationary rate. So there was some discussion on the importance of things and other, on the other hand, it was like, everyone said this is priority three.
Yeah.
And, and that was the approach that was taken.
Yeah, and we did discuss every line item, we didn't just know every priority three, we did go through all the detail of what it was. Uh, you know, we, the finance committee was there to talk to each, each of those requirements or requests.
Yeah.
And explain it, and then, and then based on that, so you got, it's a priority, it's definitely a priority three. So, we don't feel like we took out something that was important or critical.
Okay, alright, yeah, 'cause it's kinda, we're having issue with that, is that this all took place outside of a select board meeting, and impacted things that we had discussed previously as a board that were going to stay in the budgets.
This is the, I think a key difference there, Sean, is it did not impact anything, and this is a worksheet.
Yeah.
There was no votes taken.
Yeah.
So, what was discussed previously is standing.
Yeah.
This is an option to bring it down.
Okay.
That's what this is.
Yeah, alright.
It's not by any means, and we, I even asked the question at, right up front, we're not going over the master copy that's there.
Yeah.
I said, no, this is a, this is a workshop.
Okay.
And so that's all it really was, was a workshop.
Yeah.
To present an option to the select board.
Yep.
Okay, alright.
We also kind of, towards the end of the meeting last night, um, we talked about the difference between the proposed budget based off recommendations made last night, and the um approved budget in twenty twenty-two, and the difference between those two numbers. Then looked at the difference in those two numbers, and so, okay, how much of this difference is due to things that the town has no control over, like increased fuel expense, increased salt, sand for uh public highways, increased contracts, um, the things that are not discretionary. And we believe that when we get done with this budget, a budget that the selectmen will approve, that that's what we'll find, is that it is our hope that the increase in the budget will not exceed the normal inflation rate, matter of fact, maybe even lower than the inflation rate attributed to his county, as well as the state, and that um more than a majority of that um increase will be due to things that uh are required.
Yeah, yeah, which is excellent, um, and it's unfortunate, the timing, um, of what's going on with the economy and inflation, um, and everything that's going on, um, but we're also staring down the gun of um other communities making substantial strides forward that were already, you know, higher tiered, like for pay rates and for incentives uh for retention of employees. And oh, some of those twos, um, that were in the, that we're factoring in, um, offered some hope of stability. So, wasn't gonna put us on par with those other communities, some right in our neighboring towns, um, give much better um benefits, and the pay rates are already higher, um, so even like that seven percent COLA was just keeping, trying to keep pace with what other communities are doing. And we weren't even able to address the already um lower salaries. You know, like where people were kind of on the bubble of leaving, and we've already seen, you know, a few people depart, um, unfortunately. Um, just because, uh, the state and these other communities somehow midstream have been able to offer more on top of it in order to recruit um from our community. Um, and I just don't want to see that eroded too far. And that's where the, like that, um, where I view our job, you know, as, you know, select board members, is to get out into the community and to reassure everybody that we believe in the budget, so if some of these things make sense, and where it's not gonna be missed, and it's not gonna put us into a GM where it's going to have someone one foot out the door that much quicker, that's fine, but I just, just be careful, 'cause we're in rebuilding period.
At the same time. At the same time, Sean.
Yeah.
You know the history of this town. This town is not afraid to go default, and if we go default, all of it goes away.
I understand that.
So that's, that's the balance, that's.
Yeah, and I think I, I can't remember if I had spoken to you about this, or Debbie, at some point, um, but in my, from my perception of why, and I haven't lived in this community my whole life, but from what's been told to me and what I've witnessed, there's been more of a lack of faith in how things have been handled, which has created the default budget cycles that have happened. Um, and that's not saying that it's not just sheerly, I just don't think it's sheerly based on dollars. Like, the community will look at the eroding infrastructure and how things aren't kept up with, or have a bad experience at the town office because of all the turnover and people not knowing what to do, or the office having to be closed. So that will create that feeling of, we don't wanna pass the budget.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause it's like a penalty for not doing, like, it's like a mismanagement penalty.
It's, it's a gamble.
Yeah.
So, but if you, if you push, if you push the threshold too high.
And I understand that.
The thing is, is everybody out there is, is feeling the same squeeze.
Yeah.
So, you have, you do have this um number of issues that are gonna come into play for the people when they vote.
Yeah.
And if they're broke.
Well, you.
It's like grocery shopping on an empty stomach, right?
Yeah, and I get that, but at the same time, a lot of people that are in the private sector and in construction, which is a large part of our community, have already seen increased revenue, um, and are doing much better than what they were doing at the beginning of this whole thing. And these people work for our community, so how is it that, you know, I'm doing better, but then you don't want to support the people that are, you know, working for us?
And that's exactly why I wanna see that, that COLA go through.
Well, like I said, that COLA is bare minimum, you know, like I wish that we could have made some type of uh increase this year without having to have the inflationary pressure, you know, just because our, our pay rates were that far behind and our incentive programs in order to retain, um, you know, employees that we've trained and invested time and money into, uh, just constantly are turning over to other communities and going, you know, for higher pay rates, when we've laid out all this money to get them up to the point that they're at, and then we just don't support them anymore, you know, and their only next step is out. So we go through that burden of, you know, the initial expense, never to see the benefit of their enhanced um abilities down the line. So, that's a, I just, it's a cautionary, I know it's a fine line, you know, for us to walk, but I just don't wanna lose sight of that. So, I'm just interested in um this revised proposal, I guess.
Okay, uh, this is just a snapshot of, of the overall budget and where expenses are, just, uh, so everybody's aware. The fixed costs, like our wages, healthcare, Medicare, that's ten percent of that, that inflated ten percent. That's not something that we, we're just in, in addressing, we can change that at all. That two thousand dollars is, there's a difference between uh one point nine two zero and one point nine one eight. Uh, that's gonna go right back up to nine, nine, one point nine two zero, because we have a deputy emergency management director, which last night we didn't think we did, so.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Uh, the emergency management, we have a deputy director.
Okay.
Uh, we didn't have one, they just hired one, uh, so we need to add that two thousand dollars back in.
I remember, yeah, I remember we discussed that, okay.
So that'd be a little bit higher, but the, uh, the contracts, which are gonna fix cost, um, that went up ten percent. Uh, gasoline, diesel, up fifty-seven percent, actually thought that would be higher, but it wasn't, wasn't. Uh, electricity, ninety-four percent increase, heat, hundred and seventy-two percent increase, and then other. And this is where we're spending most of our time, is looking at the other expenses, uh, and really it's a, it's a smaller portion. But those only went up three percent over, since two thousand twenty-two, so, just interesting information.
Well, no, it's, it's great to see, you know, 'cause a lot of it's out of our control and, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that was the, that was the point of what we talked about at the end of the meeting last night, in terms of how to present this to the community, when you are presenting the budget.
Okay, uh, why don't I pull up, I've, I've got that spreadsheet of, of where we are today. This one. Uh, there's a, a few items that we did not, you know, it, it wasn't intuitive as to what we're gonna do. A, a lot of things we talked about last night, we'd already discussed it with our department heads and said, yeah, this is, we don't really need that, it was nice to have. Uh, but things like, uh, there was some, some random training in the town office. Uh, we had donated a thousand dollars as priority one, that's been, that has been temporarily approved or, or initially approved. Um, these, this is six, six hundred and fifty dollars in a priority two, and again, they were just random workshops. That was something that we wanted to talk about further and say, is that something we should fund? Um, you know, the, the voting machine, the new voting machine, the old one's thirty years old, six thousand dollars. That, that had, you know, we didn't really know what to do about that. So, uh, I, I, I think what it'd be good to do today is, is go through this, this list, have a discussion on these items, uh, and then we can jump back to all the priority threes that we made decisions on, um, or, or suggestions on last night and say, you know, are we, are we on the same page there?
Okay.
And priority twos as well.
I can, um, so the voting machine, I thought he put it in this year's budget and we were gonna incorporate for next year.
No, that was the, uh, the check-in machine.
Oh, okay.
Those are laptops, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so Bob would be, you know, he would know the best, uh, I guess, from what we had heard at the election, he wasn't even sure when the state was gonna approve, they was not even gonna approve replacement, yeah.
Right.
From what I understand, right, was that?
Yeah, and, and a lot of it, when we looked at them, and I think, Joe, you just brought up all the blank for approved.
Yep.
So you did, and when we looked at it, we were like, well, that's, the board has to look at that. And was that one a yes?
No, that was never discussed, we didn't, uh.
It was never discussed at any point in time, yeah.
No.
I thought Bob had said that the machine was in.
No.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the, um, the first one, the education training? So we requested six fifty and last year there was what?
Uh, okay, let me go back that up, sorry.
I think there was training on priority one as well, was there?
So, we, this year, we went over, over budget on that line, because we also included the FAC in going to some of these budget workshops. So, I think we added that additional money for.
But it was prioritized as a two, yeah. 'Cause right there it is.
Let me back up.
I think it was towards the top.
Right there. No, that's town clerk.
Oh.
It's under BOS.
Alright, we've actually spent nineteen hundred dollars this year on training.
Right.
And only had budgeted three hundred.
And that doesn't include what I paid today for, um, that we had to put on the credit cards when we did the, um, uh, I mean, we all went to the conference.
Yeah.
I think that was six fifty.
Okay, so as of October, it was eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Last year's budget was three hundred.
Right.
So we have, um, thousand seventy approved right now as priority one, and then six fifty additional for priority two.
And then there's priority three.
Right.
Which would still put us, like even if we did one, two, and three, it would be less than what we've actually expended this year.
But will that training be required next year? All the additional training of the finance advisory committee?
Yeah, no, it, you know, it very well could be.
So, so it gets our one, one-time bumps, you know?
Yeah.
And then other times, it's ongoing.
So, you know, thousand seventy is much, you know, better than three hundred, and it puts us closer on that.
Yeah.
You know, and all it does is, you know, eats away, and, um, I just hate going over the, the lines, knowing that we're gonna go over the lines, you know?
Right.
Right, and, and that's why I brought that point up, is it, there was additional people going this year that has not historically happened.
It's never happened, yeah.
And will it happen again next year, so?
Right.
Hmm. Your thoughts, Lou?
Don't really have, I'm, I mean, are we focusing then on overall training of the BOS budget, or are we just talking about the, um, FAC?
Uh, for the, the select board and the FAC, um, I guess this training, you know, could impact potentially, I guess, to, like yours, like if you go, the training comes from, is that a different budget, or?
Yeah, it, it depends, so if it's a zoning training, it would go, it should go into the zoning budget, but if it's building, it should go into the, but if it's something that's like, that covers everything?
Yeah.
Then it goes into the BOS budget.
Because you also have, the one course that seems to be somewhat important is, um, the legislative update training. And, uh, you know, that brings us, at least at the BOS level, brings us up to, um, you know, what the current, um, attitude is, or, or current laws are, or, uh, coming down from the state.
Yeah.
But I think there needs to be some money in there, but I have no idea about how much.
Yeah, I guess, we'll just leave that at the level one funding, then?
I think the reason you saw a bump in training last year is because the year before, there was, nobody was doing training 'cause of COVID.
Yeah.
So now we're back to normal, and that's why it changed.
I don't know what the historic numbers are, but, yeah.
Good point.
Yeah. Yeah, historic, they've never done any, no, which I've never seen anything really come out of that line, maybe a hundred or two.
Well, they've.
Yeah.
But.
Well, they're charging for courses now that they weren't charging before.
Some, no, some, so they still have free stuff too, which we always try to take advantage as much as possible, but,
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, usually if you go, I mean, sometimes they'll have one that's twenty bucks and you're just paying for your
Right.
materials and lunch or something, or whatever, but.
And, and as far as the finance committee goes, uh, since Dennis is not here, I would nominate Dennis as, to represent the whole finance committee. He can go to the training, and then he can train Mitch and I, so, we don't, the three guys don't have to go, we could have one person there and represent the rest of the group.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
Good point.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, I'd be interested in putting a no on priority two, leave priority one.
Yeah. No, for, alright. Yep.
Okay, if you want, we can just walk right through this now and look for, look for the things that we did not support, um.
So you're, you're getting rid of priority two and priority three on that?
Yes.
On the training one, yeah.
On the training?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll leave that at a thousand seventy for twenty twenty-three.
Yep.
And get rid of eight fifty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, this is one of the ones we, we talked about, the, um, employee appreciation, the uh spring and fall breakfast that, that you guys paid for as opposed to taking out of the town budget, so we did not include that in the town budget.
Yeah.
Uh.
Um, can I say one thing on that, on that too? Um, so like if someone's family member passes away or whatever, and we send flowers or get a gift card or whatever, we usually take that out of that, I feel like we should have some money in there for that too.
Well, there's still gonna be two thousand dollars, right, if you just scroll up.
Where is that? Oh.
More, like the, the priority one.
Oh, okay.
Is still there.
I didn't see that, okay.
Yeah. Is that workable?
Yeah, yeah, that should be fine.
Yeah. Hmm.
Uh, that was Manadok Ledger, um, office equipment, there was twenty-eight hundred was priority one, five twenty-five was priority two, two hundred priority three. Tablets were five twenty-five. Uh, there was a replacement chair for Debbie.
I can get, I can live without it.
Yeah, we don't need the tablets.
So you're, you're using the worksheet that we did last night, right here, Joe?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, yep, it's, it's cleaned up, um. This is the voting machine. Do we wanna? I'm hesitant to hold off, 'cause we don't have a lot more of these meetings before, it'll just get a little centered, so.
Yeah. It's, uh, can we phone a friend and see if Mr. Rom rolls, if he'll be able to?
I'd be, yeah.
Call a friend. Uh, can you scroll back up for one second while he's calling Bob?
What would you like to see?
Oh, keep going, I don't, something caught my eye and then I was like, so no, no. Is it something, Manadok Ledger or something?
Yeah, there was that.
Yeah, they're fifty dollars for.
Yeah.
Right there, priority two, hundred and nine dollars, Manadok Ledger.
Was actually, yeah, there we go, right there, yeah.
So we're not gonna, well, I, yeah, we don't, we don't have to have that.
Uh, we said no to that yesterday, didn't we?
Well, I think it, wasn't it left as a no, or was that a blank?
Um, hey Bob, it's Sean Talbot, uh, we were discussing the voting machine in the board meeting this evening, um, and we're looking for your input, so if you could, please give me a call back, uh, thank you very much.
Okay. Is it watering it?
No, it was like, the screen goes black, it won't come back.
Uh, okay.
It's still recording on his end.
Moving right along, uh, we kept the town clerk insurance, uh, retirement in here, uh, it's marked red just to say, yeah, it's, it's marked yes. Do we wanna talk about it again, are we good? Um, the board voted on it last week as, as approved, so.
Which Sean wasn't present. And that was another.
I thought that was, uh, I thought you were participating in that vote.
No.
No, it was a chair for.
Lisa.
This was another thing, and I don't know, did you get a chance to talk with Lisa?
No. No.
No, what you did.
I just, it was another thing when I went home that last Tuesday, I'm like, ooh, twenty percent. This is, this is substantial.
Yeah.
I can see signs in town, up twenty percent. And I understand your point, Sean, what you made at the, at the beginning, I do, I do understand it. But so when I came to the appreciation lunch, I stopped in with Lisa and I said, you may wanna consider whether or not you wanna be tied to the select board's budget with these items, because there's two ways she can go about it, one is with a warrant article, which would separate her from us.
Mm-hmm.
And I told her, you know, you're an elected official, and you have every right to do this. And that way there, if the budget does go default, maybe the people will say, yeah, we wanna give this. And she said, well, I'm gonna talk with Deb, I said, I'm just saying that, I don't know.
Yeah.
Just, just.
Is she currently an elected official, or is she?
The town clerk tax collector is in an elected position.
I know, I understand that.
Oh, currently, no, she's in.
Well, she's appointed.
She's appointed.
She's appointed right now, yeah.
Yeah.
So she has to run?
In March.
In March.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I don't know what her doubts were, she, she never got back. She she never got back.
Oh.
What what she thought, and but I just.
It's important, it's important to her.
It's very important, and it's been important to every town clerk.
Yeah, yeah, so. So it's like,
Hmm.
it's it's another one of them tough calls.
And everyone's tried to fight for it.
Which way does it go? Which way is more favorable for her, you know, from her perspective, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'd be speaking for her because I haven't had the conversation with her firsthand. Um but there is a feeling that if it goes on to like our budget and that's what we're presenting to the community, um that the community understands that this board supports the budget and in turn supports this move for her. Um and then there's the other, like the other feeling that if you just throw it out of the budget and leave her in the wind, like people may not understand it and it almost looks like non-support from the select board.
Yeah, and and.
So, because when people don't watch the meetings where you guys supported it last week.
Yes.
Well, I did bring up the point last week that this is a long term, another one of these long term things, which in my mind, my first instinct is the voters need to weigh in on it because it's taking on, um you know, an indefinite responsibility.
Yeah.
Which would then fall under, um you know, health insurance goes up. So it's,
As a member of the public, it was really unfair to not offer it, considering she's working the same amount of hours right next to somebody who is. So just my two cents, I.
That was. Yeah, and and I unders- I do understand, I understand that, but it is the way it is right now.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the thing, so. And and it's a, it's a change.
Hmm.
Well, we appro- we approved it.
We did, yeah. But I'm just, I'm saying my thoughts on it.
Right.
And the reason.
So you're you're reneging on your approval?
No, I said, in fact, I think I I put that in there and I don't know if it was recorded in the minutes that we need to really bring this out to the voters if we're gonna go in this direction, that this is a long term thing.
Hmm.
And make sure that people understand because you don't want this sliding things under the radar, you know?
Yeah.
And I know we don't want that.
No.
No, and that was the whole point of like at the budget hearing and at the deliberative that, I mean, Sean's been preaching kind of all along, I feel like, that
Yeah.
everything, nothing is gonna be hidden or slid under the rug. Everyone's gonna be aware of everything.
But it's. Yeah. And that's where I I felt that it is important for people to understand that it's indefinite, you know?
Yeah.
When this gets approved, it is indefinite.
It's permanent for the position, it's not for the person.
Yeah.
That's correct. And and I think we need to spend some time uh summarizing what happened around us and and what things are outside of our control, like uh putting up a a slide that says, hey, uh because of inflation, things are out of our control. We really, we're really not getting more, we're just spending more for it.
Yeah.
Uh so we need to be able to talk through that. And and I don't see anything wrong with having a note that says, and here's another change of word that we've we've done this year.
Right.
Um and and talk about that. So it's not hidden, but we just say, by the way, we made the town clerk eligible because she's working full time, eligible for for health benefits.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And you can talk to that.
Yeah, and that was what I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do believe people will think it's the right thing.
No, and I I'd hope so, and I do understand where you come from, Jason, you know, with, you know, the community not being afraid to turn down a budget, um. But at the same time, you know, I feel like, you know, as a board, you know, we're doing a fairly good job at, you know, taking this very seriously and going through all the numbers. Um the F A C, you guys have done an outstanding job, um and a level of detail uh that we haven't had previously. Um just to build off of this and utilize it as a tool and it's too bad, like I said, it's too bad that we have this little perfect storm going on right now, but that's why we're here, that's why we're here, right?
It's life, it's life, and it's tough decisions.
Yeah. Yeah.
And hard to know.
Yeah, at the end of the day, if the budget was, um like even a million dollars higher, I'm not saying that that's where I wanna go with it, but you just break that down, it turns into a dollar um per thousand. In the average household, that's, you know, two to three hundred dollars a year, like up for the the town budget portion only. You know, and I, like I said, I don't wanna go that far. No, no, but I'm just putting it into perspective of what the reality is, like what these numbers turn into.
And I feel like people, when they see that warrant article number one and it has, you know, the budget number, that's all they see. Cause most people don't go to the budget hearing, most people don't go to the deliberative and they don't watch these and they don't understand what goes into building that budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's the point.
And that's where the problem is.
That's why I thought we gotta be careful that we don't go too high.
So. We need to
Yeah.
make sure that people are aware of it.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, it's not a topic for this evening because I think it requires a lengthy discussion and plan. But I do think that there needs to be a good plan for how to educate the public.
Right.
Uh because I agree with you, a majority of people don't access the current venues for understanding the budget. And uh I think there's a lot of misinformation out there, there may be some mistrust, I don't know, cause I've not been in this community long enough. But there, I think with more information, there will be more support for the budget and you know, whether it's holding town hall meetings to discuss the budget, whether it's using media to get certain information across that people otherwise would not receive. Um I do think that there needs to be a much more robust education plan for the community. Cause I, not only are you concerned, we're all concerned about this year's budget, but I don't see in the, at least in the near future, I think you're gonna have the same challenges next year in terms of how to find that balance in terms of not raising people's property taxes, if if at all possible. Um but at the same time, being able to fund what you consider to be priorities and support the people who are working for the town, as you as you've pointed out, how to find that balance. And uh.
I think it's, it's this process right here.
Yeah.
And whether people are gonna engage in it or not, that's, that's up to them.
And then just understanding that there is a plan, like a greater plan in place, um and it's not just willy-nilly. Um and it is, like the plan is to create an environment of stability, um and reliability, like in our town, in our town function for our community. Um and it comes down to the budget and we just, there's things that we have to do, like nobody's flying to Hawaii and, you know, like doing training, you know?
Right.
Out like in crazy spots or doing bare minimum things just to stay up to speed in order to
run the town.
maybe adequately do, you know, like what we need to do.
Yeah. Well, like Joe said too, I mean, we're not getting more, it's just costing more to get what we already,
Yeah.
you know?
Yeah. So, yeah, for right now, since that was put in, I'm not, I've been weighing it out in my head like since this came up, um at the end of last week, um I kinda heard about some of the stuff that was going on surrounding just that, uh those benefits to the town clerk tax collector.
We need to scroll up a little bit there. I'm sorry, what was going on last week, like that?
No, this, like how it was put in and then um that thought of, like, would you rather be like on a petition, you know, like a warrant article, separate from the budget?
Mm, okay.
Um. And I believe what I heard like from Lisa's tone and that she would have preferred to keep it in the budget.
Yeah, I just told her, you know, that's, that's one of the downsides of keeping it in the budget, is if the budget goes, so does that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Uh so that stays for now.
Yeah. Okay, so uh in the, uh we've budgeted a thousand dollars for the town clerk training, there was six hundred and sixty for the deputy town clerk to do that, um that was a priority three, um that was a no. Um the next one down was was publications and other, that was other Manadok Ledger, I think it was, and that was a no. Uh travel, same thing, uh the travel was a part of the deputy town clerk training if we were to do that, so we took out that training for the deputy town clerk and uh that travel went away.
Okay.
Uh. Um assessors education, so we didn't meet with the assessors, uh it was our priority two and we just talked about it, but we couldn't say yes or no.
Yeah, Jim, uh.
So there's nothing in there?
Right now, correct, it was a hundred and ten dollars last year, it's five hundred this year.
Oh.
And it's just, we just didn't say yes or no.
And and Jim asked that that be bumped up to that because he said there are two new members that are on on the board and that will need, in his opinion, training, so.
Assessors?
Yeah, two, he said, yes.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, it looks like, you know, the year to date, you know, up there, three hundred and fifty dollars that was budgeted, they've used two hundred and thirty five of this year's.
And that also covers the admin.
Yeah. So, like to me, like for the five hundred dollars, it's worth keeping in there for the training.
Okay.
Can you scroll over a little bit further, see the description?
Um.
Does that say training is needed by support person?
Scroll over a little bit further.
Yeah, with two assessors.
Well, the assessors usually.
Come read read up here.
They usually don't go.
Oh, there, I see.
Yeah.
It's usually the, um, I don't know who is new on the board of assessors. Well, does, I don't, I don't know about the assessors, but I know. They don't go. The zoning and planning get those books, is that under education? Um.
I think we have the books in the budget as well.
Yeah, that's under something else, I believe. I think that might be under publications for planning. Oh, okay.
So was was this priority two put there by the board of assessors?
Yes. There was a, that was, when uh we sat down to review budget, they gave it a two.
And then there's two hundred dollars associated with that, um as well for travel to the training. So I'm gonna mark that, yes.
Oh. I feel like it's of value, like the training, you know, there's a lot of training that could be had and should be had for our employees and our different board and committee members.
And a lot of that stuff changes year to year too, especially in assessing.
Yeah. And if we don't use it, just like we've been doing right along, so, you know, we've been um keeping that um undesigned funded balance at a ten percent point, um and using the extra money to offset taxes. So if it doesn't get used, that's where it's going, you know? Right back, and I know, you know, it stinks that we, I guess essentially two years for that to take effect, but it's still gonna, you know, come back.
Yeah.
Let's keep it low. Yes? I don't have a problem with the asset, there's new members.
Uh deputy treasurer.
Still don't have one, but we are required to, so you can't take that one off.
We can't take that off?
You're required to have a deputy treasurer.
But we don't have one?
Did we have one? We didn't have one for the entirety of twenty two.
Correct.
And that's because.
We haven't had one for how long?
Yeah, a couple of years.
Couple of years.
Uh-huh.
Hmm.
I don't see how you can take it out if you're required to have one.
That's a RSA that requires it?
When she reaches out to Nancy, do we pay Nancy? And does it? She, she hasn't. She hasn't. No. Just curious.
I didn't know that it was required. I know that Carlene said she didn't feel the position was needed, but I didn't realize it was required.
Yeah, because if anything happens, same thing, you have to have a deputy town clerk tax collector, because if anything happens to those head positions, there has to be someone to assume that role.
Has there been a barrier to filling a position?
Um.
If it's been vacant for a couple of years?
I don't know. Well, Carlene used to be the deputy.
The deputy, right.
Um.
It's probably just more gone uh out of focus with all of the changes and all the different things that have gone over the last couple of years, um.
Yeah. Right. And fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah. What?
A a year?
Yeah, yeah, that's a stifened amount.
Okay.
And I think that that was some of the conversation too, just how low the money was and when I've spoken to a couple people about it, I said, well, you don't really do much of anything, you're just there just in case something happens. Well, what happens in case? And I said, well, then you get bumped up, you know, to that other.
You get appointed.
Be curious to see the RSA because this one says,
Yeah.
each town may have a deputy treasurer who shall be qualified in the same manner as a town treasurer and who shall perform all the duties of the town treasurer in case of the treasurer's absence, by sickness, resignation, or otherwise. A deputy treasurer shall be appointed by the town treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen. This was from.
But that first line says to.
May not shall.
May have.
It says may.
May not shall, so it's not necessary.
Well.
This is current through eleven eight twenty two?
Interesting. I always thought it was mandatory. Oh. Okay.
We could market a dollar and say yes, as an alternative. That gives the flexibility of adding money if need if need be later.
Yeah.
That leaves that that open.
Yeah, yeah, we should do that, make the bare bare minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, let's do that. Do you feel okay with that?
Yeah.
Debbie, you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
My vote doesn't count though.
But your your opinion does.
Thank you. So now the treasurer FICA and stuff, does that need to get adjusted if you take that fifteen hundred out?
I thi- doesn't it automatically adjust?
Okay.
D- I think Dennis set up the formula, it says it automatically adjusts.
It's a beautiful thing.
That's just crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make it.
Fairly trusting you on that, yeah.
Change something to a no and everything just adjusts it's own, yeah.
Uh general buildings, there was this account, uh nobody for, and it was budgeted for three hundred and fifty dollars, nobody knows what it is. So that was an easy decision to say, hey, why do we have that?
Yeah.
So we just said, uh priority three's gone.
Yeah.
Uh compost bins and barrels, uh P S A doesn't, does not wanna do that.
Yeah. It shouldn't have been in there to begin with, it's not a budgeted thing.
Uh it's got an account number, so.
Why not?
Because we had to, um, we bought them from a company and we sold them for the exact same amount of money as we bought them, so you have to have an account to post it against.
Yeah, okay.
So there should be no dollars in there for it. It's just a placeholder really, so we can buy them and sell them.
Correct. Yeah, perfect. It was actually a dollar, so.
Okay.
Uh cemetery monument, eleven thousand dollars for straightening gravestone vaults, cleaning moss off the stones. And this was a discussion on.
Lionement repair.
And that was put in the priority two. I tried to get ahold of the chairman there, but I couldn't get ahold of him to ask him about that.
So today. We have spent eighteen thousand dollars and we are budgeted eleven. However, I told Andrew and the trustees that there are funds available
Hmm.
that all they have to do is request it from the trustees, the trust funds, and then they wouldn't have gone anywhere on their budget for that.
So he put it as a.
And does that fund, um also includes the the mowing or some of it?
There's one for that too, you know?
Okay. There's thirteen thousand for mowing the cemetery, seems a little high.
No, that's not, not enough.
No.
It's not enough.
No.
I mean, I'll, most, most of that mowing is weed. I mean I'll most most of that mowing is weed whacker work.
And then cutting and all that okay.
Cause it's so uneven out there.
From what I understand I've heard a lot of uh compliments with the increased um work that's being been being done over at the cemeteries over the last few years so.
Yeah. Yep same.
I feel like the community is in support of you know upkeep of our cemeteries.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of letting them you know degrade.
This this was a a line item. That they have had through the years.
Yeah.
Like uh put the priority two was a question I was gonna ask.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But I wasn't able to get ahold of them.
A yes.
It should yeah it shouldn't be.
Yeah yeah.
I mean.
I think it should.
I don't even think it should be a priority two.
It should be it's a it can stay in priority two but I think it should be a yes.
Well. Yeah like if it if. In a scenario where the economy has collapsed and you know things are really bad you know it gets a priority two yeah.
Um yeah I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Right.
And that was what we learned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The wisdom of this one two three.
Right.
Yeah.
At first we're thinking hey let's shift it to one no just leave it because.
Right leave it a two.
The department heads and the people who did this they thought about it.
Yeah.
Right.
You know so leave it there and if we.
Yeah we can either choose to fund it or not yeah.
Yeah I think it's a great great system.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay so uh we didn't know what this was last night but it's actually a a um New Hampshire mutual aid and assistance agreement so if we need help from a a another town. Um this is a membership that allows us to to work with the other towns to get them to be able to work in our town and we can help them if necessary as well. It's twenty five bucks um and it's just another membership that we should probably participate in so.
Uh we currently do.
We currently do yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah but we nobody knew what it was I actually had to Google that this long and spend some time figure out what it was so but I I think we should support that.
I wonder if we've ever used that though.
I don't know.
I don't recall ever seeing a Greenville or Temple or Jaffrey plow truck you know such deal.
Yeah well yeah you see them but I don't know yeah yeah.
Well I mean plowing roads. I wonder how that thing works I'm curious.
Yeah.
Um okay so police education we had gone up to seven thousand dollars on the priority one stuff I thought that was sufficient. Um so we didn't do any of the priority three stuff um there was a priority three for uniforms for the uh admins. Um Mike felt that wasn't im- important so we did not do that. Um. He has plans to replace two computers this year uh and he felt the third wasn't we could push out the third so that that went to no. Uh okay incentives so the the board had informally approved longevity education and fitness incentives. Uh and shifted grandchildren uh wanted to push that off. Uh so the longevity incentive was considered mandatory that was a one that was approved uh the other two were open for discussion.
And just with these incentives I know it's new to us but a lot of the other communities already have them in place and they're expanded well past this point like this low funding point. And we have a lot of young officers you know in the department now um where they would be looking to you know probably tap into that education incentive.
That would be the one that doesn't make sense to me.
The education one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well because it's not necessarily um going to improve their ability to be a police police officer.
Did you see when Mike was talking about that?
Yeah and I asked him that and I said have you ever seen a correlation of good officer equals master's degree? As opposed to high school performance he said not really.
But it's not just that kinda education it's also training when you say it.
This one isn't.
No this one's educated.
This one's essentially which degree you hold.
Oh oh the other one down below.
Yeah. Sounds like you're continuing ed.
Oh.
Yeah continuing ed is something different I'm absolutely in favor of that but.
Oh okay. Okay. Gotcha.
As far as this one goes I'm not I would be more likely to say I don't I don't think that's a.
I know that it is the focus of some of the guys that are on the department now you know and like I said there are.
Right and that's great if a person wants to you know. Improve themselves educationally if you wanna call it that that's that's great.
No I understand that so then so let's take like the scenario of like where we're at you know and this is it's real time Jason right now like with what we're faced with. A lot of the surrounding communities have a continuing ed program like in order for like for retention of officers and is like a benefit to them. Um well just let me finish like go through it um and that probably is there you know for the younger officers that are in place and not to say that you know older folks don't wanna continue like continually learning. Get new degrees as well I have no desire to do that like I it's not my thing but I do understand where it's another tool. Um for our police department in order to you know retain a person cause when they're weighing something out and they say well.
Yes.
I could go over here and you know get this degree I don't know how much it costs um over the next five years and I'm gonna be reimbursed for it. Um and that could possibly cost me ten thousand dollars but if I stay over here I'm paying that out of my own pocket. You know ten that's a lot of money and I think ten thousand's a conservative estimate on what a total cost on like that next degree level would be um. So I. I know it you know it's five thousand more dollars but you know priceless in the the retention uh you know like officers and creating that stability.
Possibly. It's possibly priceless.
Yeah.
But the thing is is uh I don't know incentive give them five budget fifty five hundred dollars for marksmanship training. And achieving different levels of marksmanship or tactical skills but just to get a bachelor's or masters or whatever to me that doesn't.
It has to be law enforcement related.
No that's what I'm saying I think it should be law enforcement related if we're gonna fund it through the P D.
Oh I I thought I kinda was under these it's not gonna go for you know basket weaving.
No you can this this is it could be liberal arts.
Oh.
Well.
It doesn't like to define right?
And we could and we could design yeah define it or designate that it can't be utilized to that like it has to be yeah.
Yes.
It has to be law enforcement related.
I don't know if you can or not that wasn't the way I understood it I understood it as simply you have this degree you now get this much X amount of dollars every year on top of your salary.
Yeah.
That was simply the way it was.
Oh yeah for having that that's right too it was for have for getting the degree it's not paying them back for.
Just for having the degree. Mm-hmm.
Their education itself or books or whatever it's.
And it's what other departments are doing like you said.
Hmm.
Yeah.
To me. I'd like to see it done in in the things like I mentioned and I don't have a lot of knowledge of police. Training and whatnot and levels of certifications but them I would be in favor of rewarding you know that actually have substantial.
Job reweighted.
Um yeah make them better better police officers. So that's my hesitation on that.
So if they. So if they're a police officer with a master's degree in food science.
Right.
You're not gonna pay more for that master's just because.
Well we would with this.
Well I I don't think it's been really defined.
It hasn't been defined I I you know it hasn't been defined as anything.
Yes.
I mean we could say the rules right?
It's just. Yeah a person with the looking for a police job with a a back uh master's degree versus a bachelor's degree um and they're both in law enforcement.
It was.
I don't know enough about it to say that one's better trained than the other.
Mm-hmm.
You know the one thing that is if they had a bachelor's degree and then they were going to um law school. That's well within um the thing and then you could actually use that officer as your prosecutor.
Mm-hmm.
Or at least getting it trained as a prosecutor and that way we don't have to bill of going to an external prosecutor.
Yeah and that's the points that I'm making.
Yeah. In in all of my experience I've worked a number of years in government as well as in the private sector. Um it's always been understood that a tuition reimbursement or whatever incentive for continuing your education is it has to be job related. And it's been always been up to the supervisor to sign off on it as we approve this because it's job related or not.
So if it were if the stipulation was there that it's for law law enforcement would you guys approve it because I'm sure Mike can just say that.
Yeah.
Has it implemented yet so?
For an advanced law enforcement degree that that may include some social science courses humanity courses et cetera.
Yeah.
Or forensic class you know something like that.
Or forensic classes that would be directly involved yeah.
So we should put a stipulation that law enforcement group based on eligibility job.
Then does that not go up back up a few lines in training?
Um so the training budget is for on the job training um. You know it's it's not it's not college credit right yeah.
Is for college training.
Yeah.
Hmm. And the last the last thing I would say with them too is they were prioritized as twos.
And I think we would we should leave it up to the police chief to determine what classes should be we provide the police chief with guidance and.
By the chief. I was trying to find the paper because he gave us all a handout.
Yeah I mean you know there might be a biology class involved or you know whatever else that may not make sense to us but it may be.
What Jason's saying is that this doesn't have anything to do with classes I do remember.
From what I understand.
Yeah yeah.
That's from what I understand.
If you have a bachelor's degree.
It's it's we're not paying for classes we're saying if you have a bachelor's degree degree you get X amount of dollars a year. No matter who paid for your bachelor's degree we're just saying you're coming to you're coming to the police force with the degree.
Correct.
Or while you're you've been a police officer and then you got your masters while you were doing that we're gonna give you X amount of dollars it's not it's not toward their education.
Okay. Oh.
It's not paying for any education so there's nothing to limit it to.
It's not paying for their education. So is that a one time of payment or is that an increase?
Annual.
Annual.
Annual which is again it's how I understood it.
Does somebody with a master's degree get annually more money than?
Same.
Yeah. Yeah if you look at a pay scale um they have a fixed pay scale but if you have a master's degree you have a higher pay scale that's basically what it is.
Okay. I'll find in in that case I I leave the discretion up to the police chief.
Yeah. So should I mark that as a yes and move on so for education?
Just one second Joe.
I'd like to see it as a no for my vote.
Yeah I don't have those with me I don't think um.
I'll mention it Joe.
But for me like I feel like it's a a yes.
Oh. Interesting Jen's on vacation.
To leave it to fund it through the budget this year.
And what is that a priority two?
Yeah.
It's a priority two and it will give a bonus to anybody who has any higher than a high school education diploma. Every year that bonus will come in it essentially becomes a pay raise.
Slightly higher pay scale yep yeah.
Yeah if we add a pay scale it show yeah yeah.
I think that's a little high.
Well it's not five thousand five hundred per officer that's the total that he needs in order to fund.
To fund that.
Yeah all the officers that have degrees.
What's your name Jim?
Hey Jim.
What are you looking for?
I think you're the tiebreaker.
We're yeah you're the tie but Jason's no I'm yes.
Um.
No extent.
No objection always.
What does that even mean?
No objection.
No objection.
Well.
I didn't I didn't bring that one but you're gonna need one.
I need a yes or no it's just simple yes or no.
I'll say no for this here.
Okay.
Okay now we jump down to fitness. So basically uh as I recall uh I think it's every three years the police have to be have to pass a fitness test. Uh if they pass that test on annual basis they wanna give them a an incentive to do that it just kinda keeps them in better shape and and. So it's it's not like they're crunching two months before their fitness exam to be a pass the test so you want to give it to them manually.
Hmm.
I would rather see an incentive towards a um. Reimbursement of a part or all of the um uh joining a a fitness center to stay in shape.
I bet this could be used that way.
This is cheaper.
If that could be used that way that that's fine I mean let's say a fitness center is like three hundred and fifty or four hundred a month give them an incentive two hundred and fifty each year for that. Um not per month per per year give them an incentive two hundred and fifty a year towards that.
Well I recall the way that the chief explained it was they would get that money when they pass their physical. Cause they have a P T every two years I think it is or maybe.
Three every three years.
Three but he would be doing something yearly with them.
If they pass them standards is what he's.
Yeah like every year.
So this would give him the yeah this would give him the ability to.
But they're only. They're only required to qualify that every three years. Yeah he said that he would be he from if I remember correctly he said that he would be willing to you know hold them to the standard on an annual basis if they're getting that.
Yeah that's how I remember.
They already do.
I I would rather see the money going into um the the cost of a fitness center and having them use it.
So it's four hundred dollars that they would get and they could apply that to the fitness center if they wanted to.
Um and you're talking about per year I'm saying limited to two hundred and fifty per year and let them pay the other hundred and fifty out of their pocket.
But.
Yeah but that's the four hundred is a total cost of like a gym membership or whatever they're doing it's just it's a little bit of money towards that.
Their job is.
So we're not looking to fund all of that and really if you gave them that additional four hundred dollars. And they have the gym memberships they I don't know like I don't understand why you would wanna earmark it and send the money directly to a gym.
No I'm saying that if they join a gym.
Yeah.
That we will reimburse them up to two hundred and fifty dollars per year towards that membership.
So um I'm gonna interrupt it we we can't go there I mean Mike's not here and it's a budget discussion so.
I totally agree with you.
Yeah I we should have had discussion when Mike was here but.
Okay.
So you know he he asked for four hundred dollars per person that passes that fitness exam on an annual basis.
Mm-hmm.
I think Lou is within his. If I was a department head and the select board is trying to figure out how to if there's ways of saving money taking some rather than none is might be more appealing and I think the select board is well within their authority to.
Do you wanna prove for a lower amount?
Well I'm just saying I think it's it's weird I don't feel like Lou is out of line into it now yes James.
But you assume that.
You just happen to be here listening to this. And I'm not against the four or anything like that but the one comment I wanted to make is you don't have to join a gym to stay fit.
That's true correct.
Okay go jogging twice a week mow the lawn eat healthy and you're gonna pass the damn big E C A's and not all cops have to take it.
With wings.
There are cops that are grandfathers without requirement anybody's state.
Mm-hmm.
So if you hire an old cop.
He doesn't have to take it.
He doesn't have to take it.
But if he does take it locally he'll get an extra whatever per year.
Yeah which that.
My my thought my thought was you don't have to join a gym to to do this.
Yeah.
And and yeah I I kind of agree with that if you wanna if you wanna stay in shape by chopping wood that's up to you but. I'm much more inclined to fund an incentive for that than I am. I'm much more inclined to fund an incentive for that than I am the previous one. You know, because I can see it would definitely benefit the police force to have our officers in shape, right? As far as police work goes, so just my thoughts on it.
So I guess the question's funding level then?
Well, Lou brought that up. I'm not sure. Right now, twenty four hundred dollars gives four hundred dollars a piece, usually, yeah.
Which I agree with. So we asked for keeping that at the current four hundred.
Twenty four hundred dollars a year, yeah.
Those are yes. I'm sorry, we just have a couple hundred more of these to go through, so.
Right.
Do we, I I say before we make judgment on it, let's talk to, um.
We can make a judgment.
It's such a low barriers.
It's a priority two. It's twenty four hundred bucks and I'm gonna go with the priority two, meaning he wasn't too concerned with it. And I'll say no.
I'm sorry, what are we talking about now?
No on the fitness?
Yeah, because I'm just basing that on the chief's ranking it as a priority two.
Well, the two means that it does it's not required to keep the doors open. That doesn't mean that it's not going to weigh on somebody's decision whether or not they stay. You know, like with the department or not. So it's like what keeps the lights on versus keeping people in the seats is two different.
I think I understand. I think I understand. I think I understand.
You want it on the right side.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, in in reality, somebody mentioned before, you know, if if the cop doesn't stay in, uh, fit and pass it, he's out.
That's the truth, yeah.
Or he's gonna retake.
So part of his own responsibility.
But interesting tone. That is a very interesting tone.
What's that?
You know, cause essentially taking some of these things away doesn't even allow for the community to weigh in on it either. You know, cause they have two opportunities to weigh in, one being the public hearing and then two being the deliberative session ahead of the vote. Where they could take that out themselves if they felt so compelled. But here we sit here as a board of three eroding, you know, these stabilization points of a department. Just thinking that we know that the community will say no anyways, like they won't be in favor of a more educated, more, um, in shape police department.
That's an interesting take as well.
For all the money you've invested in the academy?
Well, and as 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 just a private citizen, if you're removing the incentive for education. I would be more inclined then to protect at least one of the other incentives instead of taking both away. I going back to what you were saying, Sean, about what kind of message does it send in terms of whether we support, you know, the department? And if you take away the education incentive and you take away the the fitness incentive, I'm I'm concerned about what that says about the polarization of the police department.
Well, the I think a key thing there Mitch is it's not taking away. It it's never been there before. This is adding. So that's a difference of.
And in in terms of the condition, uh, the condition of the officer, uh, to pass that fitness exam is a condition of his his him, his employment. The condition of his employment from the time he comes on in service. And, cause we had a number of applicants who didn't pass the that fitness and were immediately disqualified for the for the job. Now, as they get older, those standards change, such as, you know, like in the military, you run a mile and a half, you've got eight minutes to do it. But as you get up to, you know, thirty five, forty, that the amount of time, um, goes up.
That's fine. Yeah, so I guess, you know, it's it's a no, you know, because.
What does Lou say?
No, Lou said no to start. Before you, yeah, yeah.
And the shift deferment show, you decided not to support this year, um, as well. You've done that, um, at Mike's review. Uh, fire computer, they they wanted an additional, uh, incremental computer for the fire station, um, and and Lou offered to, um.
I'll get I'll get my computer.
Get that for him, so. So thank you, Lou. Uh, that was a dollar, um. Another dollar item. Okay, uh, building inspector, um, mileage, he's not paid mileage today. Uh, and he's requested to get paid for mileage.
Yes.
I agree.
Uh, yes or no?
Yes.
All right.
Uh. Postage, sixty dollars for certified letters.
Wouldn't that be a fixed cost? Well, it's a priority two.
I don't know. I mean, if you have to send a certified letter to somebody, you have to send a certified letter. You have no way of knowing how many you'd have to send.
There's there's. There's no postage in priority one.
Nope.
Which is weird.
It probably went out of somewhere else's budget.
I wonder if Susan, how much mailing do you have?
I myself have probably done two certified letters for the bu- building department, but I don't know what the inspector has sent. And I can make up to you.
Get him a smart car.
So.
A what?
Smart car.
That'd scare a lot of people.
Toyota has a version of a smart car. It's pretty cool.
You just send it right out. First, yes.
You're talking like almost eight dollars per letter, so.
Yeah.
Sixty dollars.
I don't see why we would restrict them from doing postage.
I need a second yes. One yes.
That's a yes.
Yeah, Jason, yeah.
Okay, uh.
That can be encumbered. So you can take that.
Oh.
For thirty eight thousand?
With that, the dollar.
Mm-hmm. The BSNA building permit software.
So this, um, this is for the building inspector.
Correct.
Is there a module for that?
Yes.
And you're and that's gonna be encumbered?
This year.
Um, okay, good.
So we can take that right up.
Thank you.
It's all it's all right, yeah. Thanks for stopping in.
Okay, here you go.
You too.
Good day, Jim.
Uh, okay, uh, deputy director, two thousand dollars. Oh, that's actually a.
Yeah, it should be made a one as a priority.
Um, and we already worked this.
It's already filmed.
It's yeah, that's what you, yes. Uh, training. We've got one course for two hundred and fifty dollars. He's requested two additional courses for a total of five hundred dollars.
I thought he can take those classes for free. But he said that to me the other day.
I don't know.
Through the state, cause he's been in a position.
Did you have to work for, did you have to work for three years first?
Can you bring her one? I thought he said one year.
Um, yes, his request for additional two classes moved to party two, two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, per class, um.
So. Yeah, if you want to see a training, it only benefits our community, in my opinion. And for five hundred dollars, it's not that big of an ask. So, I mean, yes.
I'll belong with it. I'm sorry, yes.
All right.
No objection.
Hey, with all due respect, your last, like, I'm not opposed turned into a no.
Right.
Uh. TPW education certification training. Uh, it's three hundred dollars and there was nothing else of party one or party two.
Was this for the CDL licenses that you talked about?
There was three hundred in there this year and we used two oh three.
So, um, I almost think that it's actually a priority one then.
I know.
So I think he was, uh, pretty stringent, conservative rankings.
Yeah. Well, yeah, cause it if it literally didn't keep the lights burning.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Should we mark that a yes?
Say what? Say yes, you, whatever is that to a priority two?
Yeah, yeah, that should be a priority two.
All right, I'll change that. Okay. Uh, the hydrant maintenance, we talked about that, uh, with Peter here and you guys did not approve it.
Yeah, cause I I forgot what the rationale was behind it, but he seemed like it was fine not having it, right?
Yeah, he had heard, he didn't hear any complaints about them not working and nobody asked him to budget it this year or last year, I guess.
Okay, all right.
For what?
And and I didn't represent Peter, but I was here for the meetings, that's not like.
Hydrant, hydrants.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, calcium. Uh, I, at the meeting, um, it was not approved, so it's marked no. And I don't recall him saying that it was actually a requirement.
I thought he said that they could take that out of the, um, the highway block grant.
Block grant. Oh, that makes sense. I think that's.
Oh, good.
Good call as well.
Right, yeah, you too.
Yeah, cause it's one of those things that happens like, he doesn't touch anyways. I don't know what this hundred and thirteen dollars that was put against it this year was, but.
Uh, the twenty thousand dollars for the tree removal. He said they're gonna try to find another way of doing that other than paying the twenty other thousand dollars. That was, you guys didn't approve that?
Yeah, I didn't talk to Becky either about it, so, yeah, it's still no.
Um, okay, equip, equipment rental. They don't have the need now, but typically they use the skid steers or compressor. Still a no.
Well, it's almost like we should be able to. Should we leave that in with a dollar and a yes?
We had fifteen hundred budgeted for this year and used four oh seven.
Yeah.
Is that the rental?
Yeah.
Although I just put in five thousand for that. They had to rent a boom. I just paid that today.
Cause if if they have no option. No, there's nowhere else that they would be able to put that.
Yeah.
If they rent something.
Oh, actually.
They could rent something, but then it becomes one of them asterisk.
Yeah.
They did, what I did today was out of the highway block grant, I believe, not out of that line.
Oh, really?
I think so.
So so Debbie, when you enter the data, uh, you enter all the yeses, do you, um, if you don't enter data, does it go, does it default to one? Or do you have to go back there and enter it as one?
I have to enter it as one.
So then everything we declined, we should go back and change the value to one. So you get that then, right? Is that how that should work?
No, if it's not going to the budget, I don't wanna see it.
Then a line disappears.
Then the, then the line disappears.
If if you if you want a dollar in there, then yeah.
Okay.
Leave it as a dollar.
So do we wanna mark that as a dollar and mark it yes, or do we want to?
Yeah, I think so. Like, it's something that's been in there and.
Yeah?
Yeah, I I guess we can spend a buck.
Okay, uh, so Peter had asked for a third person at the, um, at the transfer station. Uh, he had justification for it and thought it was gonna even even pay for itself. Uh, you guys approved it. And, uh, we just wanted to highlight that to make sure that that's still the plan.
Yep, for me.
I don't know how you can not.
Jason, move.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two, three yeses.
I'd like it highlighted for the, uh, budget hearing as well.
Make that pink.
Cause another.
You wanna go back and, you wanna leave it? You wanna leave a mark on it? What would you say?
No, it's fine, but we should sit down and make note, like, all talking points, right?
Put the budget here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I was hoping some of them could stay highlighted for the else.
Oh, oh, so you did, yeah, okay.
So it's brought it to your attention.
So it's stayed out of the asterisk.
Yeah.
It's up to the FAC.
Is it a big deal to leave it, right?
No.
All right. And that's for us.
Uh, was this wrong?
Yeah.
Uh, animal control, we're gonna contribute to, uh, subcontracted, we're gonna, we con- contribute some towards our education or some towards additional training. Uh, there's an option for for ten percent more and that was a no.
I wasn't here when Mike, did Mike bring that up at all when he talked to Debbie?
We didn't, we didn't actually have a formal review on animal control.
There was none.
Yeah, and since that's a three, it'd just be a no.
Yeah, and she works for a bunch of other times too, so.
Hmm.
A dollar, dollar. Okay, uh, pool education, so, um, the justification spread cross certification to access homeless material.
Those are the numbers, yeah, no.
Five hundred dollars, party two. And that actually came in today, but it was less than what she was asking for.
Yeah, she was asking for, I think on the, um, first line where it says twenty four hundred, I think the original number was right above four thousand. I don't have it in front of me. Um, and the challenge that Shauna had when she developed that budget was that she can't count on who she's gonna have working as lifeguards. There are fourteen positions. And so what we she budgeted was for certification and training, presuming that no one was certified. She doesn't even know if the people that worked for her this past summer are gonna return. So she ended up reducing this quite a bit. Um, today, she sent me these numbers for the training. The red cross certification for five hundred is, uh, she feels is a holds out to the community that the people providing swim lessons are really qualified and certified to do so. And that's what that training is for.
That makes sense. I'm a yes for that.
Yep.
What'd you say?
I said yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's New England for yes. Did I see something? I hate to break your rhythm here, Joe, but I thought I saw something that said funeral expense under P and R. As you were scrolling down fast, I probably misread it, but I'm really curious now what that was.
Under the pool?
On P and R.
Oh, tax and rent.
Yeah, right there. Oh, that was welfare examples, funeral expenses.
Oh.
So I mixed that into.
Beautiful.
Okay, sorry, sorry for your.
Keep welfare in mind for a minute. I want, let's go back to that, if that's okay. Um. Conservation commission. Uh, traveling to and from meetings. Two hundred bucks.
I don't think we, do we pay any other boards traveling to and from meetings? Or is that under training?
As of October, they use twenty dollars.
And they can't use any of their, uh, trust fund for anything like that?
They're not allowed to. What about the money that they get from, um, current use?
Yeah, well, yeah, so they haven't.
That just piles up.
Could they use that though?
They actually haven't used eighty four percent of their budget this year.
Yep.
Well, they used seventy five dollars.
Yeah, about thirteen hundred. Yeah, uh, two hundred and seventeen, fifteen. Yeah, uh, two hundred and seventeen fifty nine they do so far. Yeah, I don't know.
This is one of them priority two and three things.
Yeah.
That I think in our workshop there, we said, well, it's priority two and three, then.
Yeah, it's just, it's such a low amount of money to not have it, if they act, if they need it this year for some reason.
But, I'm I'm curious how much um, where does the money go when they receive current use tax? Uh, not tax, what do they call that?
Land use change. It's current use, and, uh, and it is tax money.
So where do they, where does that go?
I think.
Conservation Commission has.
The first fifty thousand we collect in land use change tax goes to the Conservation Commission.
Right.
What they can use it for, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what my question.
They, they can buy.
They can use it to purchase other land.
Sue would know.
They can buy, yeah, I know, let me talk.
I know, please.
They can buy properties, um, that are worthy of preservation. Um, we also assist people that if they wanna put their property in an easement, we help them with the, um, legal cost of that. So that's what some of those are.
But look, that, have, has the Conservation Commission been using funds from them, I don't know, where do they go?
No. Just sets in a trust fund.
They get deposited into a trust fund. Set.
Or rev- revolving from one of the, one of those things.
Yeah, it's actually, there's actually multiple accounts, but I don't know how each of them is funded.
Yeah. Right.
But it's almost like this thing is a self-funding department.
Could be.
I mean, from what I'm, I didn't look at it, but I heard you guys, they spent eighty dollars last year.
Two hundred and seventeen.
Yeah.
No, I was saying, eight, seventy five dollars on travel costs.
Oh.
It was two hundred and seventy nine dollars and something else.
Well, no, that was.
No, they spent no, nothing.
Nothing on travel, that's what the budget is.
So.
Uh, their total budget's thirteen hundred and twenty five dollars.
I mean, you want to just give them a buck, keep the line open, does that make sense? I'm like, I don't know.
Well, put it to fifty, they spent twenty this year, right?
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, there's, you know, Sean, there's, there is the, the flip side to your opening preamble, of a million dollars adds a buck to the tax rate.
Right. Yeah.
And the flip side is a thousand thousands or ten thousand um, hundreds adds a million dollars.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm like, if they're not using it, then, I mean, we can leave the line open.
Yeah.
I don't know. And that's where, that's the philosophy that I look at, these twos and threes.
Yeah, that's true, that is true.
Because them things, they add up, and after the workshop, we went from a twenty percent increase to a, whatever it was, ten point four.
It was like, yeah, just over ten, yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Which was right in line, and we didn't touch, we didn't even look at priority ones. We only looked at priority twos and threes, so.
Yeah.
Is that what we're doing now?
Just to, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess that makes sense, that was.
Watch the pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves, is that what my grandmother used to say?
There's, there's the two.
Yeah.
I think one, yeah, one is, can't see the forest for the trees, and the other.
Well, we have a forest one, a tree one.
Yeah, so, so I'd say, so do a yes and have a dollar in it.
They spent twenty, do you wanna make it fifty dollars, or do we just a dollar?
No, I'll just go right down to.
Uh, so may need it if they just wanna send out sample warrant articles, for example, printing, was a priority three.
Same thing, yes, dollar.
Yeah, I would imagine we'd print on our printer anyways.
Uh, dues, six hundred dollars. And Bob with Deb to see why six hundred, and if needed again, so.
With me? Huh. Why me? Must be, he must meet Sue. I don't have anything to do with that.
Yeah, she thought that was a no.
I don't, I don't even know what those are dues and dues for.
Do.
The budget.
Yeah.
Put it as a priority one, I don't know.
Yeah.
They didn't use any here.
What did?
They budgeted three twenty five and didn't use a penny.
As of October, yeah.
Well, as of today.
As of today, I have it today.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd leave it since you put it as a one for now, um, next year it could get tighter, like as we go through this, that is a good point, Dave, that's the whole point of this, like in the ratings and, um.
My third stock. Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I believe they put in a lot of work.
Yeah.
And to just disrepair it.
Okay, and then, uh, travel meals was seventy five dollars, didn't use anything, and.
So a dollar and yes, just to kinda highlight this whole exercise, I guess.
Fifty thirty.
Yeah, if you're not going to education, you don't need the travel reimbursement.
True.
Yep. Uh, heritage fundraising, uh, no comment, hundred and fifty bucks.
Was that, was that what we talked about last night for coffee and donuts?
Yeah, that was a suggestion that Luke gave at our meeting, he said, well, I mean, if you're gonna do a fundraiser, you wanna have coffee and donuts there.
What?
Remember that, Deb, were you there?
No.
Last night?
Well, no, you weren't there when Luke was there, that's right.
No.
So, and Fran and the commission put it as a priority two. And then I, last night I said, well, just put no, if we need coffee and donuts, I'm pretty sure I can find people to donate coffee and donuts.
Yeah. And then there was thirteen hundred dollars we didn't know what to do with, and it says for mailing to all townspeople, so heritage of town to help promote interest.
Yeah. And that was the request, and that was on the hopes that there's renewed interest.
Right, and there is also the warrant article for twenty five.
There is.
So, I mean, you could lower that to a buck.
Well.
And do a no, I mean, is it necessary to run the town?
To what?
Run the town.
Run the town, what do you mean?
Isn't that what this budget is all about?
Oh.
Bare bones?
Well, no, it's not just bare bones, it's, you know, sprinkling in, um, those elements that offer stability and growth. And whereas the Heritage Commission is one that seems that there's, um, renewed interest in it, and a little bit like
Hopefully.
of some push.
Right.
Um, I've seen the boards prior, um, give those things a chance.
So it doesn't get used?
Um. Yeah. And it won't be there next year.
So there's nothing in twenty twenty two.
Yeah. I think it's worthwhile, cause I don't believe that our community has a full understanding of some of the historical properties that we have, and the disrepair that they're in, um, and the attention that they need. Um, so I think it's, again, could be invaluable, um, in order to communicate out, um, to have that committee, like, have a chance at, you know, um, rebuilding, and then becoming, uh, something substantial, which will take care of some of these older structures that we wanna keep.
Uh, yeah, in my mind, that's a small part of it, I think a big part of the Heritage Commission's thing is to make people aware of the heritage of this town.
Yeah.
Where it came from, uh, without history.
Well, and then in turn, hopefully, yeah.
You know? Yes.
And there's, there's state money available for that type of thing, too.
Hmm.
Yeah, they, we've, we've looked, yeah.
So I'm a yes for this.
Yes, so.
I am, yeah. Lou, Jason?
I'll say yes.
Yes.
Okay, next one, just I do know towns, uh, provide welfare services.
Yeah.
Um.
And just so that you know, this is the one budget. We could essentially choose to disfund the whole thing with a dollar, and we have to pay whatever anyways, so it doesn't make sense to cut anything, um, from her budget, you know, she's usually pretty good with it. Uh, she requests it, she uses it, and so far, she hasn't gone over budget that I can remember, like substantially.
No.
No.
The numbers match pretty much what she has spent in previous years.
Yeah.
And we have to pay it no matter what it is.
Yeah, so really, that whole budget's a one.
It is what it is, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and even on this sheet here, she has thirty seven percent left, but that could change this week.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's just the nature of that department, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. There it is.
Uh, okay, that's the, uh, the only this, only I've been able to guess a no for is, is the voting machine. Vote counter. Um. Yeah, I, I.
How did you think that machine worked this year? You were a witness all day.
All I know is a bob, so there aren't any more parts for it, or they're getting scarce.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's only six thousand dollars, we could encumber it from this year, and then if we, if we, if it needs to be purchased in twenty three, we have it. If it doesn't, it just goes back into the general fund, we put it in the budget for twenty four. I mean, it's only six thousand dollars.
Does this report you gave us this evening, does that show any of the encumbrances?
No.
Okay, so right now ten percent of our budget left. With three hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars. So how do we keep track of the encumbrances, so that we don't?
I have all this.
And it's all right here, there's a whole line for it in the system.
Oh, okay.
Encumbrances, yeah.
They're all zeroed out.
Yeah.
This one haven't decided exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, where's that line for the encumbrances?
It's the one with zeros.
Next to the totals.
Oh, okay. The one up here?
Yeah, you see it? Third from the right.
Got it.
Yeah.
So, what do we do, encumber? Did he have, he didn't have it in his budget for last year, huh? I know he talked about voting machine, but did he?
Uh, he, uh, it was the electronic check-in, that's in that. Which we also have to encumber, cause that didn't come in this year.
Yeah, he did not budget for it.
I have a question on that account number, though. It looks like oh one, oh one four oh dash two, just for the E R. And Tom Clark, oh.
Good, three.
Tom Clark is dash three, so why would this fall under to emergency?
Uh, no.
It isn't.
Oh, election, okay, nevermind.
Yeah.
Right, election, yeah, yeah, election registration, yeah.
Got you. Okay, sorry.
Well, if we have money to encumber, I'd say, although he didn't budget for it this year, so how does that work? Are we allowed to do that?
Hmm, well, you could shift, but
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm in favor of leaving it in the budget for this year.
Just let him buy it next year.
Yeah. And then the money's there, and if it's not available this year, then he can encumber it directly.
Right, for next, for twenty four.
For the following year, yeah, yeah, and then it's done.
Yeah, I think, if he, if he can't get parts for it anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it breaks down in March, and we, actually, we don't have a fall, do we? No, I don't think we have a fall actually this year, so.
No, no.
It's never a Friday.
Mm-mm.
No.
It's an off year.
Hmm. And then twenty four, that's a big one.
Why, what's happening in twenty four?
Alright.
What did we do? Was that all of it, Joe?
That's it.
That was. Popped it up some more, huh?
Three point two million.
Three point two one, I think we had it down to three point one nine at the end of the night last night.
Right. Yep.
So where would that be?
With the variance between, uh, proposed and twenty two.
Um you can't go by that, cause I've, I've taken out some, uh, I've hidden some values, so that so that's, that's math, um. Um. Hold on a minute. So just.
So the operating budget was two point eight.
Eight.
Yeah.
Two point eight eight?
Yeah.
Yep.
I know the sooner the better, but when is this due to the state?
Um.
Well, no, that's the, that's different, that's the school one specific.
Um, no. No, I was gonna, given the important date list.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right here, but this is for twenty twenty three, is it the same? It's pretty much.
Twenty twenty three is next week.
Yeah. Oh, I know, you put these out for us.
Yeah.
As they post and publish zoning documents.
Yeah, yeah, so it's the tenth, like, we have to have it posted, we have to have it posted a week prior to the public hearing.
January tenth.
I think it's gonna be the seventeenth.
It's supposed to be posted next week. No, by the tenth, so we can finalize everything at next week's meeting.
Oh, so eleven point six.
And then I'll give them a question to plug it all in.
Is that enough time, Deb?
Look at that, eleven point six.
Eleven point six?
Gonna have to be enough time, right?
Oh, boy.
I'll be right back.
Jason, would you take one and pass it?
And if we went, and like you said, it's gonna be more of, you know, work to finite, like, but if we went, um, six months and six months rather than three and nine?
So the, uh, the color is seven percent, and it's, right now, it's, it's affecting nine months of the, of the calendar year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so let's say that's five percent, if we were to, um, move that to, um, to six months, it will be, you know, roughly, I guess probably four percent, or something like that. I'll speak about a percent difference, and that's about a third of our budget. Um, so it would have an impact if we, if we introduce coal, the coal adjustment in July as opposed to, um, as opposed to April. Um, so Lou suggested rather than do it April first, do a coal adjustment in July, then we're only actually giving it, you know, for half the year as opposed to three quarters of the year, um, delaying implementation, uh, and we could do that, it's, it's a nightmare to model.
Oh, then I, I want to, it would, and it would just be repeated every year afterwards.
But it's, yeah.
It would be, but the first year would be a, it'd be a hard shift, and I think I would, um, I'd be unwilling to do it this year.
Yeah. Well, I really.
I feel like we're at such a point with our employees that we don't wanna push buttons.
Yeah, one more. And then the downside to that, it's almost, it works it backwards, Lou, um, so to get onto that state cycle, the appropriate way to address it would be at a, a stable point in the economy, and everything's like fairly running well, we've got all. We've got all of our communication points down to the community, and then to make an eighteen-month budget. In order to. Like get there in a year and a half, like to put us like on cycle, so like that budget that we propose would be. You know, substantially higher. We couldn't do that just willy-nilly, like people would have to understand that you're, instead of doing two tax cycles, you're doing three. Like in that budget process. So it's, so it wrote it the wrong way.
So you're putting. Yeah, because you're taking. The following year after that.
Yeah.
And you don't have those numbers depending on what inflation is.
But it would make all, I know, yeah, but, so it's kind of a dance, all of this that we do is a dance. But that would put us on to, like, our whole warrant article cycle would make more sense, cause right now, it's almost like we have to think of three years. The year passed, the year that we're currently in, and the year that we're going into in our current model. Like, so it's a pretty wide scope that we have to address all of this with. Um, cause the tax rate that we had just set is actually based upon projected estimated revenues for next year. And the warrant articles that were passed in March of twenty twenty-two. So we're art, like, we're behind right now, so that's why we'd have to do that year and a half budget in order to get like on to the full, like the right cycle. Um, but yeah, no, I wouldn't be in favor of going to July either. Um, yeah, cause it was, it was just within recent history that instead of. The uh, the employees getting that cola adjustment retroactive to, say, January. Of, so we vote on it March twenty-three.
Mm-mm.
They used to get three months, like, behind.
They would, they would get a lump sum.
Yeah, and we had just made that switch uh, three years ago to April, so that we could just start it fresh off that new cycle. Because that going retroactive was putting us in a bad way, because we were already collecting taxes like a year behind, like the way that we're set up.
Mm-hmm.
So then it almost doubled it, so that was a way for them to at least grasp like those, like a quarter of the year. Um, and it seemed to have helped over these last few years. There's been less tries.
In straight.
I think it's only been three years.
Huh?
It's only been two years.
No, that is the first year that I came onto the board.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. So.
That must have been a hard sell. But anyways, I guess.
Well, no, like, it only, it was a negative impact for the employees, so it actually reduced the budget.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, it must have been a hard sell for the employees.
But they, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
We didn't have space.
I don't know about this as much. So, yeah.
Uh. While we're here, uh, for the police department, we budgeted five thousand gallons of gasoline at four dollars a gallon. Um. Newsmax, my reputable news station, uh, said by middle of the year, gasoline be back up to four dollars a gallon, um. And. New Hampshire tax is twenty-two cents a gallon. There's a additional two cents. That they don't describe what that is. It's just two cents. It goes in somebody's pocket. And then there's eighteen cents that go to federal taxes, so the net price per gallon is three fifty-seven. Um, if we were to do that, our total fuel consumption for the police department would go from twenty thousand dollars down to seventeen eight. Um, if we went to forty-six hundred gallons, which is what Mike expected, that gets us down to sixteen. And if we dropped it, because he was saying possibly ride sharing. Um, that could go down about fifteen grand, so we could save as much as fifteen, much as five thousand dollars if we wanted to just look at that.
But I felt like, you know, I was more of the arguing point on this, that leaving it at four dollars a gallon, you know, just because it could go up to six.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
We don't, you know, so it's kind of, if we make that line too tight. We're gonna be in a bad way, and effectively bad managers, you know, cause right now, we've weathered the storm this year, and I've had no majors come up, like budget-wise.
Yeah.
Which is a huge testament to all the department heads, um, and the people like managing everything, that we're still within our budgets.
Yeah.
Yeah, and when we have seen those fuel costs rise, they've already gone without some of the other things that they've, you know, intended on budgeting for this year.
Yeah.
You know, to make sure that they don't do the overruns.
Yeah.
Hmm.
And I'm okay with that decision. I just wanted to make sure it is a big number.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I could, I I don't know the uh, fuel consumption for diesel, so I couldn't tell you what happens with the uh, highway department, but.
Hmm, actually, you weren't here for that discussion, then. What are your thoughts and feelings on like that fuel line?
Yeah, I think it's anybody's guess.
Yeah.
I think you run a risk if you budget for best case scenario.
Yeah.
You know.
So you're fine with leaving it at that?
I would be fine with leaving it if.
Yeah.
If we can. That's something I don't think, that line can't be overspent unless there's weird things going on, you know what I mean? So what he spends will be spent.
Yeah.
On the fuel.
It's going to be whatever.
Cause it's all going through the gas station or anything else, not something that could.
The uh, the only thing there is that we do get the, was it forty cents total discount from uh.
Municipal, roughly forty cents, yeah. Forty-three cents.
Between the federal and state. Yeah. Which is what we've been getting all along anyway.
Yeah, yeah, so it sounds like we're good to leave it at that twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
It's all half. What do you think of the work that was done? Is it scary to you? Cause I know at the beginning, you were like, what, what's going on here?
Well, I still don't really have clarity on, you know, the changes that were made yesterday, um.
That we just went through.
We just went through.
Oh, it's like all of, like, alright, yeah, so I guess.
Yeah.
I just don't see eye to eye on, you know, that roughly eight thousand dollars uh, for the PD and the uh, education and the exercise, but.
You know, another, another justification that I have for it.
Hmm.
Is I believe that's the one department that has kind of kept up with the other towns, cause you're talking about, and I've heard it. Forever.
Which department's that?
The PD.
Oh.
That the wages of noches is always, uh, it's way behind everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but not the PD. And I feel like there, there's someone up to date. And the other departments, maybe not.
Yeah.
And so if we're gonna have. Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I do, and that's like, in conversations with all the department heads, I've encouraged them right along, like, to advocate for training and different incentives, what they feel would help. Um, you know, offer stability to their departments, um. So, no, I do agree, and that's why, like, I'm in favor of the training and more education, the more people want to learn, I think is great. Um, it's only, only adds value uh, for our community. Um. And really, when you look at the dollars, you know, look to invest in those, it's just, it's so small. Um, but it means a lot on the back end, um, to those different employees, so. Yeah, no, it's tough. It's 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 too bad that, it's too bad that we're here and we're looking at just like heat, almost two hundred percent, you know.
It's the balance.
Yeah.
Or like, and you can't, you can't fight that, you know, so. To a certain degree, we have. It's hard because we have two giants now. We have inflation and the school. Before, it was just the school that was kinda, you know, took the bulk of, cause when you take that combined tax rate. It's not that much lower than a lot of the other communities, but when you just look at the municipal rate, you see how much, how inexpensive our municipal rate is. But we have that Goliath that just. I don't know, you know, just consumes and consumes and, um, and it hurts, you know, cause we're on the losing end of it, and there's a lot of great people that. You know, work for our community in this town office, and that's not to take anything away from the teachers at the schools, um, that's just. Um. We need some help down here, I believe, like in order to keep, you know, the ship afloat and. You know, people happy and, but I do agree, Jason, you know, there's other departments, you know. Could use to have a, an adjustment, cause we did, we made an adjustment for the police department a year or two ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that went over fine, you know, with the community, there was no pushback. Um, and we actually saw an uptick in the approval rate of the budget, so.
Right. I was gonna say that would be a good segue.
What's that?
For the, for the school budget thing.
Default.
Um, school budget.
So.
So are we gonna get, can we get printed? Sheets like, how do you wanna handle this, Sean? Like if we all got a printed uh, sheet we could take home with us and go over during the week? Or are we voting on this tonight, or what are you thinking?
No, uh, yeah, next Tuesday for final changes, and I guess to get some input uh, from the departments that um, were affected by some of these changes. Uh, cause if they're willing to stand up at that deliberative session and make the case for uh, those items, then. And they want it to stay on the budget. You know, they should be able to, you know, voice that opinion.
Yeah.
Um. Cause at the end of the day, you know, we are, you know, managers and overseers of the budget, but, you know, our community, um. Has to approve it, the whole community.
Yeah.
And our department heads are the ones that know what it takes in order to do their jobs and to retain the people, um, in those departments, um. So, yeah, I think you could just email this out, Rachel.
I can, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so you just, same thing, email and.
Yeah, I'll do that tonight or tomorrow, man.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so next Tuesday is the, the last chance for any changes or adjustments, um. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, and will you guys be reaching out to the different department heads that you worked with of the impacted lines or?
I'm gonna resend, cut, you know, cutouts for each, showing them what it is as of tonight.
Okay.
Regardless of any changes, because.
Yeah. And then please, don't feel like you have to shoulder those, like, if there's anything, like back, any comments back, just, you know, tell them to, you know, send us an email. Um, and let us know.
Yeah.
You know, cause we have to, we have to listen to their voices as well as our community members' voices.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's the tightrope we walk.
Right.
No, that's a rock in the arts, bud.
So what if the total N W?
I should add, I did. When these thoughts were on, in my head, and I was.
Can you look back to that, um, table that you had showing the.
Open up discussion with Joe on email. Um, I called the chief and I told him, hey.
He, uh. What the big drivers were.
Talking with. Yeah.
Can you just bring that up again?
From the minutes.
With the FAC right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I can do that. One last second, let me figure that out.
Yeah, sure, and I told him exactly what I told you, and he says, I do understand.
Lou, are you okay with when I send a cutout of the fire budget to Meredith? Are you okay with my mentioning in the email that you'll be supplying?
And I think for all of them.
Yeah.
No, that's twenty-two.
It's not the only important element.
The computer for her.
No, no.
Yeah, it's more than that, yeah. I know it's a big one.
But to try and take some of these.
That one.
Priority twos and threes, which would be more or less wants. Try to get them through and then lose everything would be devastating to them.
Yeah.
Anyways.
Yeah, you have it.
Yeah, uh, just the recommendation, I passed out something, but I think uh, judge format actually works better if you look at the, the back of the FAC minutes. I think this table is a fantastic part of your, uh, could be a fantastic part of your presentation at the budget hearing and the deliberative session. Um, the one thing I would recommend is in the, before the last column on the right, where it shows the percentage increases, is to actually put in the dollar increases. So that it, it's more understandable. I think percentages, people are maybe trying to compute that in their head. Or they're gonna try to figure out the difference between the third column and the fourth column, whereas if you just put the number of dollars.
Yeah.
I think to show that, you know, the other is such an insignificant amount of dollars compared to the total budget. And you wanna emphasize, um.
Well, you're gonna send that, another copy.
But how, how good you've done on this budget, that, you know, if you exclude the things that you have no control over, you've really kept the budget pretty tight.
Yeah.
And I think that this sends a really good message.
And he, I think he has the numbers there, right? Seven eighty-one over to eight oh five.
He, but.
Yeah. You see the difference.
But not, but, that's not today's, that's not today's numbers.
Yeah. No, but when we get the numbers done, I think it's still gonna be a good number in terms of that other category.
No. Yeah.
And, um.
This is very helpful for presenting a budget.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Especially in these times with.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's, it's showing the, the whole budget at thirty-five thousand feet, and so getting into the weeds and the details, saying. You know, this is the overall, and this is what we've accomplished, and we've been able to hold to, pretty close to twenty-two budget, except for those things we didn't have control of.
Yeah.
And as Joe said, we're not, you're not purchasing more, you're just paying more for what you've already had.
Yeah.
Which everybody's doing.
You know, it, yeah, and that's, that's a, that's a significant message.
In their lives right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really good. That's the kind of thing that speaks to me.
Yeah, it's a great, great. Yeah.
Right here, I just.
Yes.
And you look at seven eighty-one to eight oh five.
Maybe come with some other term rather than other.
Yeah. Well, this is just.
It sounds so.
Yeah.
Missile alias, no.
Yeah, no.
Other is fine.
Yeah.
Uh, if you have different categories, let me know, uh, I have a working spreadsheet that, that I've categorized all the expenses into, and I can sort it all different ways, groupings all different ways, so. If you have a certain format that you wanna see, feel free to give that to me and I can give you the data for it.
Okay. Hmm. Looks good.
Mm-hmm.
So. Default budget. The elephant in the room.
The big old elephant?
Is that an elephant?
Oh, yeah.
So you wanna lead us through, Debbie?
Yeah.
Default budget and what it means.
Um. So what the default budget means is basically, we cannot add anything to any line items that weren't approved in the twenty twenty-two vote. So, doesn't matter that electricity has gone up, uh, ninety-four percent, we can't add it in. We can't add the increase, we can't add the fuel, any of these other things, uh, we can't add cola raises, we can't add the increase in health insurance dollars. Can't add any of it. And any, the only contracts you can add into it are things that were signed prior, that were approved by the town, so prior to March of twenty twenty-two. So basically, your default budget is. Very limiting in this, normally, it wouldn't be so horrific. But. I mean, because electricity and fuel and all that stuff has doubled or tripled in some cases, that's where we're gonna have a problem.
What are we looking at for a rate? How do we set that? Are we supposed to?
Yeah, I have to. There's a whole form, as you can guess.
There's a form for that?
The state, there's a form for that.
Wow.
State of the nation says, there's a form for that.
So they have a, it's kind of like a tax form where you start filling in numbers and it, it fills itself out as you plug in values or?
Yeah. Yeah. No. It's kinda, it's kinda like that. But there's, there's questions that, you know, what are your dollars and contracts and, and like this, I haven't really gone through it thoroughly yet.
Uh, does the default budget take into consideration any inflation?
Nope, no inflation.
Previous year.
Nothing. No. You can't increase any line items.
Is it in essence, so you can have a default budget that's higher. Than the proposed budget, but it takes a specific set of scenarios, like for that to happen, what we're looked at right, we're looking at right now, um, our default budget. What we're looked at right, we're looking at right now, um, our default budget would be lower than what this year's budget was. Cause we'd actually be pulling out some things, like the one-time expenses for this year, all that gets pulled out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So.
To that last year.
Not where we wanna go.
That last year's budget was what, two point four?
Yeah.
No, two point eight.
Two point eight.
Two point eight eight four, I have.
Yeah. Was the operating budget. Yep.
But the default's lower than that.
In this scenario, it would be, yeah, yeah. So, very important, um, that all the members of the F A C have faith in the work that was done. All the members on the select board have faith in what was done in the budget, as well as all the department heads, the administrator, and getting out and informing the people that you interact with in town, um, and engaging them. And not waiting for someone to ask you a question about the budget, just saying, hey, do you vote in March? And some people may laugh at you, and no, like why would I do that?
Yeah, a lot of people don't.
Well, that's all of our local stuff goes on in March, and did you know this, this and this, and get people to the polls, um, and get people to be a part of the system and to understand, um, how critical it is, and where it may just be a them not showing it to the polls, but they would support the budget is al- almost like a no vote.
Right. Yeah.
Uh, cause they didn't make time to go to the polls in order to cast that yes vote, um, cause typically in March, you know, we'll have in between seven hundred and thirteen hundred people will come out, depending on weather, um, which is not even.
Oh, add a fourth thousand registered voters.
Yeah, yeah.
Sad.
So it's really important to please everyone that's been a part of making this budget, engage, you know, the people that you know in the community, and like I said, don't um, sit back and wait for questions, try to be proactive and let them know all the time that you gentlemen have spent on, you know, working with the department heads and this board, um. And just, you know, get the word out, get people out to the polls in March, and to be a part of the public hearing, you know, coming up in a few weeks in January, and then the deliberative session in February. It's eye-opening.
It is.
Yeah.
Hey Sue, can we put some kinda like countdown clock on our website? You know what I mean, X more days to the, um, to the budget hearing, and then once that goes by, X amount of days, hours, minutes, whatever to the deliberative.
I could do it manually, I don't think I could do it on that.
That might be a good tool, that's neat, a good idea.
You know? Just so, not, you know, the six people that look at our website won't see it, but I think we could do it on um Facebook also.
Amazing, yeah.
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 You know, maybe?
Yeah, even if, what, what about like if I just did it every Monday?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, well, so many weeks till, and then it will be days till.
Right, well, cause, yeah, I mean, and, cause everything's on a Tuesday.
Does that work?
Don't forget tomorrow, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, leading up to it, I feel like at least, you know, just to get people aware and.
And and if I'm gonna do it on Facebook, I could say, you know, like three weeks till, whatever, did you know? Maybe something on the budget that would educate them on?
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you guys?
Did you know if the budget doesn't pass, we have to go to a default budget, which brings a big trouble?
She's gonna wake, she's not getting.
But it is, even that is a tight rope too of, you know, it's good to hold that in your mind and respect the default budget, um, but not to
Right.
encourage it to come to fruition to some degree, like not to, oh, yeah, just, I don't know, like worry about it too much, um,
Yeah. Think positive.
And just, yeah, be more on the belief and the faith in what you've put in to this body of work.
I agree.
We would have to be careful about what we put out there though, because we don't wanna be seen as encouraging a vote, isn't that a bad thing?
Either way. No, I mean, we can support our budget.
Oh, just getting people out, yeah, getting people out to the polls.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sean just did fifteen minutes of encouraging people to vote a certain way.
I, I got about three hours more, uh, as things go.
I don't think there's anything illegal about.
Oh, encouraging to vote is, is a good thing.
No, he was encouraging how to vote.
Well, no, just like the value of the budget, you know?
Value of it.
Yeah, cause at the same time, I don't think that any three of us sitting here right now, you know, from the select board thinks that the budget, we've grossly over budgeted and thinks that there's, you know.
Well, I'll say, um, for my part, I feel a lot more confident than I did last year, and not um, laying that on anyone.
Yeah.
It was just presented to me in such a way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like I understand. And part of that is, again, I don't wanna act like someone holds blame, I was new, newer last year and.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the whole, yeah.
Comes together.
Last year was interesting for sure.
This year was boring.
Not for us, I don't think it was boring at all.
That was big, kid.
Yeah, and because it would be actually to be at this point at the beginning of December, you know, so goals for next year.
Right.
Be a whole month ahead, so that if there's any little lingering things.
Right.
Uh, that we can really focus in on those things and, um, instead of having to look at, um, the whole thing, you know, quick and.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've, I think the three of us have been, you know, uh, Luke included, have been kind of collecting over the course of the process, lessons learned, since we were kind of rolling out a process and we weren't sure how it was gonna go.
Right.
And so forth, so, um, sometime into the new calendar year after Dennis gets back, I think we'll sit down and gather all that and then sit down with all of you and say, this is what we recommend in terms of even improving the process for next year.
Mm-hmm. That'd be excellent.
Yeah, love it.
Especially, you know, by and large, you're given such a wide, you know, just a few guidelines.
Yeah. Here you go.
Make it up as you go. So, you guys, awesome, awesome, awesome.
Yeah.
Cool, well, thank you very much, do you guys have anything else to add or?
Awesome. You guys so much.
They did an incredible job.
Are you, are you needing or wanting our presence for next Tuesday night?
If you're available, it wouldn't hurt, I don't think, uh, just in case.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to be here, if the department heads are coming, I'd certainly like to be here, so.
They may not have anything to weigh in on, it might say, well, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we still have a bunch of information, so if you have any questions, we can answer a lot of the questions if we, we are here, so.
Yeah.
I'd love to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Deb, enjoy your vacation, feel better.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming in.
I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I guess I'll use sick days instead of vacation days.
I know. Nicely.
Oh, no way, I can carry those over.
Yeah, you can carry over this.
Ecotronic.
I'll take my personal time.
I'll back up a little here.
In this nicely chilled room.
I know.
I don't know if it's getting colder or what, but.
Freezing, I am so cold right now.
Alright, I'm gonna keep those electricity costs down.
Yeah.
You too.
See you, Joe. Bye, Mitch. Alright.
You're also.
Yep, yeah.
I think so, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Sue.
I studied, uh, septic systems.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask, but I'm not going to.
Yeah, that one.
It made the bus, it made the budget. I was gonna say something, but I won't.
It made the budget that much more interesting.
Oh, boy.
Alright, so, any old new business, Deb? Jason?
Can't even think.
I have one more thought that I wanted to carry over from last meeting. And that was, as we were going through the charities, and I, there again, I expressed hesitation on that warrant article. Just in principle, is this the role of the government? To donate to charities, um, that aside, it opened up the question to me. How do we justify donating to this charity?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and not this one, and now I'm gonna pull it back or define that is in today's climate, in the culture, there is an actual, I believe, uh, social engineering push going on, so there's this big faction that's trying to push a new normal for society on America. I think anybody who looks at the news would have to agree, you know?
So what is it, uh, I'm waiting for the?
Well, the thing is, is some of these charities have engaged in this social, uh, I'll call it the culture war, and they've planted their flag on one side or the other, and to me, it doesn't matter which side you planted on, if part of your organization is actively pursuing it, how do we justify donating when they, sort of, they're in medical, but they're planting the flag?
I can't think of any of the charities, did you identify any of them that
Well, I.
were concerning for you, or?
Yeah, and I, and the whole thing is, I know what this is, right, for me to bring this up, it's like, hey, chop rocks at me.
No, it's not rocks, like you, like presented in a couple of different views where, so, it's just a realization, because there are
No.
Yeah.
And. So, yes, there was. I'll, I'll say this.
People from our community that utilize certain services.
Some of them, yeah.
So that's what we've tried to do, at least over the last few years that I've been on the board, and I don't know prior to that, but I think that at some point, it was more like what people knew, they gave to, or whatever request came in, they would give some to, uh, but there was an increased push for numbers, like, can you tell us?
Yeah.
Like how many people from our community you actually serve, because.
And we got that.
Right.
We got that this year when you were out last week, we got reports from all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so they've been good that way.
Yeah.
And we've traditionally underfunded, like, we've never met a request, I don't believe, like, it's always a pers- like a percentage of the request, um.
We met a few, there were a couple, are you talking about like the, um, there was one that, like, they have mask mandates and
Well, that's, that's kind of, um, kind of.
vaccination mandates and that kind of stuff?
I guess I can read from here, and I don't know how, let me see. Here was a, one of the comments was, we will work to build and sustain the long overdue changes in our society needed to ensure healthcare equity in our coun- country, particularly in underserved communities. We understand both overt and systemic race racism as public health issues. And so it goes on. That's part of the mantra, mantra of this redoing our society. Is claiming that there's racism in roads, there's racism in everything, and it really brings about, in my mind, division, and I didn't, in the last, you know, most of my adult life, I never felt division. And I can tell you, I have friends from all cultures, not only friends, but family members, um, but this kind of talk.
Thank you, Susan.
Thanks so much, Sue.
Is a dividing talk and brings contention through communities.
Yeah.
And so, and it's on one of the charities that we donate to, so who are we donating to and unfortunately, this is the reality we live in today, is what I feel. And we can duck our heads in the sand.
You don't have to name, you don't have to name that one, but what one, like, what do they provide for services?
No. It's, it's health, and in fact, mental health. Yeah, I feel like I'm not creating this thing, I feel like it's part of our reality, there's a culture war going on. We can ignore it, or we can say, okay, there's a culture war going on, what role do we wanna play in this culture war? And as a town, so I do that personally, I'm very much feel like I have to participate in the culture war and stand up for what I believe. But when we come to the town, then it's being thrust into it through this, and by financially supporting organizations that have raised their hand, um.
Yeah, it's really a shame, because there's, you know, not enough, um, mental health.
I agree.
Resources.
I agree, which is why I, in my mumbling preamble here, I said, here, this is an invitation to throw rocks at me, I think, but I'm gonna go with it anyways. So, not really requesting action, but definitely I have hesitations on that.
Yeah, that's too bad that they feel like they need to make statements, like to use their platform, like.
Right.
Yeah.
Everybody does now.
And the other issue is, um, some of the healthcare providers, s- they feel like it's good healthcare practice to give COVID nineteen vaccinations to babies and kids and, and teach people that they need to wear masks wherever they go. We saw that when we were going through, and it's like, well, you know, I, I had my battle there with the town, I don't know if I'll take it outside of the town.
Yeah.
I want to go.
Uh, well, no, we're still in an open meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
But so, that's another thought, which is, I feel like a different level, you know, they're still hanging on to two years ago, maybe there can be grace.
Yeah.
But the ones who are planting flags and saying, we need to redo our, it's long overdue that our society sees these changes, them ones are harder pill for me to swallow.
Yeah, yeah.
Amen. Uh, are there old and new?
Definitely appreciate that sentiment, um, it is such a, it's a tough.
I know, and the warrant article passes by a lot every year.
It does, because, but, I think a big, part of that is, who wants to be a Grinch?
It's almost three quarters. Oh.
Oh, yeah, no, you need these services, yeah, yeah.
Right. Crazy.
It'd be nice if everybody didn't feel like they needed to make a point, and they could just, like, serve everybody equally without making some bold statement.
Right. Right.
It would be nice.
I know.
I've had to switch banks, when I told them that, the reason I'm switching banks is because you guys decided that you're gonna join into the polit- political world, all I want is a bank to do banking with.
Right.
I don't want you telling me all this stuff.
Right.
Yeah, but, in any case, so it goes, what were you gonna say, Deb?
No, I took objection to, um, you know, some of them have, let's say, much higher overhead than others.
There is that aspect.
Yeah, they weren't nonprofit.
And, you know, and that's, you know, there's a whole lot of money being kept within those particular charities that are used as giant bonuses for their, you know, chi- heads of staff and, and stuff like that. And I do have an objective, but when you go ahead and just put all of these into one warrant article, uh, you have no choice as to which, how much you really wanna give to anyone.
At the deliberative session, there's a choice for people.
Yeah, they can pull it out, increase it, decrease it, whatever, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
There is a choice if people wanted to do their homework.
Yeah.
And probably if somebody did their homework, um, there would be very little resistance to it, I would imagine, just because nobody does their homework.
Depends on which side of the political fence you're on, I think.
Sue, have anything for old new?
No. I had one more thing. I had one more then.
Oh.
And it's just, I stopped in at the P D and they're making good headway.
Yeah.
Oh, excellent to hear.
Yeah.
They've almost finished the demolition and
Yeah, Kelly said that they put up a wall
Putting up walls. Yeah.
To, to keep, so they wouldn't have to intermingle between the two groups.
Yeah. Yeah, and now it's done for security.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Cause there's sense of.
So, I can make a political dinner, but.
Who's funding that wall?
Debbie?
I'm good.
Alright.
Well.
With that, I like motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.